So now we move on to item three. General Plan and Visioning Framework.
Good evening Chair Dingra, members of the Planning Commission, and my name is Belinda Dynas, Principal Planner, and I'm pleased to present to you the Draft Visioning Framework and Summary of Engagement Efforts for Plandana Point General Plan Update. We are nearing the end of Phase One Visioning for the General Plan Update. Our consultants Diane Bathgate and Elizabeth Ocampo-Vivero from R M Design Group are here to provide you with a full presentation with an overview of the visioning process, discuss the draft vision and guiding principles, and highlight key points that are intended to facilitate plan development in the Phase Two process. The purpose of this evening is to obtain feedback from the Planning Commission and the public on the proposed vision. The Planning Commission may provide their recommendations, which will be presented to the City Council at their next meeting on July 18. Please note that one public comment letter was received and distributed to the Planning Commission via email and hard copy. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Diane and Elizabeth for the presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Belinda, and good evening Chair Dingra, members of the Planning Commission. It's really an honor to be here tonight and to share with you where we're at in the process and share with you two main documents that have been a culmination of this visioning phase as it's nearing its close and embarking on the next phase. The two documents we're going to highlight tonight are the Summary of Engagement Efforts and the Visioning Framework, which are now available online. And we'll also share some highlights of what we've heard. There's quite a bit of information that we collected, so we're going to just touch on some highlights. And we'd like to encourage folks to dive into the two documents to really get a more full picture of what information was gathered. And then we'll talk about next steps. So where we're at in the process is that, as mentioned, we're at the tail end of the visioning phase. There are three phases to the General Plan Update effort. The visioning phase started last year and is ending around this time. We're going to the City Council, as Belinda mentioned, there are a few next steps. And then the bulk of the effort is really development of the plan that'll take place over the next two years, approximately 2023 and 2025. And that's where there'll be a more detailed analysis of existing conditions and trends and development of policies, actions, and implementation plans. And then finally, the General Plan Update is going to be good for a while. It's intended to guide policy decisions over the next 20-plus years. And throughout this process, there is intended to be community engagement at every step of the way. Now, this timeline is just meant to illustrate all the different events and activities that occurred over the last several months. We had the launch of the project branding and website in February and had a number of in-person events and also online activities to gather information. And now, the next few slides, we'll just touch base on a few of those events just to give some context to all the activities that took place. And I know on June 12, Belinda gave an update a little bit more in-depth of all of the different activities and some of the feedback. So we're going to just touch on it in case there are folks that are new to the process. We had our Community Visioning Workshop on March 8 earlier this year. We got quite a few comments, 145 comments, over 60 folks attended. I think a really robust part of this outreach process were the pop-up events. They're very popular, going out to the different events in the community. And yeah, almost 700 responses, individual sticky notes that we then copied, digitized everyone, and has found in the Summary of Engagement. And then the Community Open House that we just had on June 29, which was a touch base to reflect on what we'd heard so far and give the opportunity for folks to see what some of the main themes were that were developed over the process. Also, some of the online activities. We had a general plan video in the YouTube playlist, included that general plan video as well as a video of the council and when they initiated this general plan process. And also the Community Visioning Workshop, so that March workshop is also online. So we've had over 1,000 views of that YouTube playlist. The project website that has a lot of information about the general plan and about the process, and also the online tools of the questionnaire and the interactive map. And that, we had over 2,000 visits during the process. And a number of folks signed up for updates, which will not only benefited this phase of the process, but will also inform the next phase of the general plan update. And that list will continue to build. The online questionnaire had about 238 participants, but then that collected over 3,500 data points that are summarized in the Summary of Engagement Efforts. And also the interactive map likewise. There were 127 comments, but there was also additional data points that were collected by folks that agreed with it or disagreed with it. And then we had a number of meetings with boards and commissions, a meeting with you folks earlier in February, and then also in June, and then tonight. And then City Council also in February and June, and the Youth Board in February. And we did a grand total, and there's over 8,000 data points that were collected throughout the process since February. So it's quite a bit of data that we hope will continue to serve the city and the citizens of Dana Point throughout the general plan update process. Now, as the visioning phase reaches its culmination, the city prepares for this next phase. And these two main documents that have been prepared as a result of the Phase One Visioning Phase are the Draft Summary of Engagement Efforts and also the Draft Visioning Framework. And they're on the plandanapoint.com website, and they're available for review. And we hope they'll continue to provide utility throughout the general plan update process. The Summary of Engagement Efforts presents a comprehensive and transparent compilation of public input received as part of the visioning phase. And it also describes the community engagement program and the details of the conducted activities. But every comment that we received has been documented in the Summary of Engagement Efforts. So when the general plan update, plan development phase launches, you can go to a section on circulation, and you can find all of the rod data as well as in the visioning framework. You can find where that's been distilled and brought up to a more generalized theme. So we're hoping that that will be a good tool going forward. And then the visioning framework, it does distill all this input received. We had to do the summary of engagement first. And then we looked at all of the results. And we're able, since it was digitized, we could search on themes. And we read through every comment. And then it was organized in the visioning framework generally by the categories of general plan elements. So even though they interrelate quite a bit, that, again, we wanted to bring it up to a general plan level. And what are the key themes? Make it more usable and readable. So I'll go ahead and hand it off to Elizabeth to go over the Summary of Engagement details, and then I'll give you a few highlights of the visioning framework.
Thank you, Diane. The Summary of Engagement Efforts document is organized in seven sections, which capture the different components of the community engagement program conducted as part of the visioning phase of the general plan update. The first two sections are Community Engagement Program and Communications Plan, which detail the approach and tools utilized as part of this effort. The document also describes the different meetings and presentations that were part of the visioning phase, including meetings with boards and commissions, stakeholder meetings, and committee meetings such as the Community Open House and the Community Workshop. Each of the pop-up outreach events and online activities are described, and their results are also covered in Sections Six and Seven of the document. The full document is available for review on the project website, as Diane mentioned. Today, we're sharing with you a few sections to help introduce the structure of the document. The Online Activities section of the Summary of Engagement Efforts includes the results from the online questionnaire and the interactive map. The document captures the 238 responses to each of the questions included in the online questionnaire. The responses are categorized and displayed by topic in tables and graphs. The document also captures the 127 comments received through the interactive map, which were sorted by topic and displayed on maps that were complemented with tables that contain all the responses captured. The pop-up outreach section of the Summary of Engagement Efforts document describes a series of events conducted to gather input from community members, including the Festival of the Whales, redo market, and farmer's market, amongst others. This section documents the activities that were utilized at each event as well as serves as a compilation of the 675 responses received. The Community Meeting section of the Summary of Engagement Efforts documents the Community Visioning Workshop, which took place in March, and also the Community Open House, which was an opportunity to share with the community what we've heard so far and collected thoughts regarding the guiding principles and key themes identified through the process. The Visioning Framework document includes 11 sections. Introduction and Purpose, Draft Vision Statement, and Guiding Principles are the first two sections that set the tone for the rest of the document. In the next sections, key topics and themes identified through the visioning phase are grouped into the General Plan Elements categories: Land Use, Urban Design, Housing, Circulation, Noise, Public Safety, Conservation in Open Space, Public Facilities, and Economic Development. After the Introduction and Purpose section, the Visioning Framework document includes a draft statement and guiding principles that capture at high level the community's feedback received through the visioning phase. And Diane will go into detail as the presentation continues. The Visioning Framework documents provides an overview of the main topics and associated themes heard throughout the visioning phase and are organized accordingly into their corresponding general plan categories. Each of these sections includes an introduction that provides context regarding the current general plan and highlights from what we've heard so far. It also groups the themes that reflect the comments received and organizes them by topic. This section also includes quotes that illustrate the types of comments that we received in relation to each topic. And now I hand it off to Diane, who will go over each of the general plan element categories. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We just wanted to take a little bit of time on each topic to give you some of the highlights. This is just a sampling of some of the feedback we heard because each topic really is two or three pages worth of key themes. For land use, the land use element typically indicates the location density, intensity of future development for all land uses citywide. And it aims to achieve a balanced mixture of land uses and compatibility between them. And some of the key themes, just some highlights that we heard. There are many others too that are contained in the visioning framework, but really to regulate the bulk scale and the uses of new development for compatibility. That was a comment that we heard often. Also, to develop strategies to reposition retail and office commercial centers over time to respond to market trends. And overall, to have a balance of residential and commercial uses that facilitate the availability of services and amenities for residents and also support businesses. For urban design, the urban design comments suggested overall improving the public right-of-way, regulating bulk and scale development, and enhancing the pedestrian experience and providing attractive and functional spaces for gathering. Their priorities were beautification and streetscape enhancements, incorporation of community and neighborhoods serving open spaces such as pocket parks. That came up quite a bit. And making sure to guide new development bulk and scale by incorporating context-sensitive building design and site planning. Now, the housing element is an element that's required to be updated every eight years. And the city recently adopted the six-cycle housing element last year. So there probably won't be a lot of changes coming up in the general plan update. But there were quite a few comments that I think will continue to shape the policies of the city going forward. And that's primarily to seek to accommodate the needs of families, senior, middle-income households, disabled persons, just the range of folks in Dana Point. It's important to address. Retaining the character and amenity of a single-family residential neighborhoods was also a theme that we heard. Improving housing stock, rehabilitating older residential neighborhoods, and ensure housing in neighborhoods are well-maintained. That's definitely a priority also within the community. For circulation, highlights of community comments included connectivity between destinations, improving circulation with a variety of travel modes, including walking and bicycling, and enhancing safety and accessibility. Connections to key destinations such as the beach, town center, and the harbor, strengthening those, ensuring safe and efficient vehicular circulation, and improving bicycle and e-bike safety was definitely on the minds of folks as well. For noise, we didn't get a lot of strong opinions on noise, but we did hear... A lot of folks don't see it as a substantial issue, but traffic and street noise was clearly the most frequently noted noise concern in Dana Point. And we even received some positive comments, like folks like to hear the seals in the evening from the harbor. But generally, the overall goal that we heard was to minimize noise in residential areas and noise-sensitive uses. Applying site planning and design strategies again to reduce these impacts was mentioned. And also, of course, enforcement of noise regulations is important as part of that, mitigating that impact. For public safety, also, the public safety element was recently updated in 2022. But it does cover quite a few issues that people are still... There are brought up comments about feedback topics emphasize protection of beaches and coastal bluffs and citizen education and emergency preparedness. So those are going to be continuing themes going forward. Strengthening notification and education and public awareness of evacuation routes and plans. Ensuring resilient public infrastructure and utilities in the event of a natural disaster. Continuing to monitor climate change, sea level rise, and coastal erosion, and to work with local jurisdictions to minimize damage and protect lives. That was a common comment, just like we were talking a little bit about earlier tonight. Conservation in Open Space combines two mandatory elements that the state requires, conservation and open space. And it also talks about, it also addresses existing and future parkland and recreation facilities. So it covers quite a few topics under this particular element. And community feedback highlights include expanding recreation access and opportunities, stewardship of natural resources, and mitigating coastal challenges. Because Dana Point has very rich natural resources, and folks are very... It leads to the character and identity of Dana Point and also can be challenging. For public facilities, comments were... Community feedback highlights included undergrounding of utilities. I think there's a contingent out there that was very well-organized, and they shared their thoughts about undergrounding overhead utility lines, ensuring adequate utilities and services, expanding cultural and educational opportunities, and supporting sustainable approaches to service delivery and improvements. Comments were also received on a variety of public facilities, including parks, public structures, and community and cultural arts facilities. For economic development, community feedback highlighted the many local assets that can be leveraged for economic health and the importance of serving residents as well as visitors. The continued support for local small businesses was evident to retain the character and attraction as a unique destination. Support of small businesses was heard frequently. And to really balance businesses and tourism for both locals and for visitors, having that balance and that mix. So those are the main topics that are aligned with the general plan element categories. We also, after we prepared all of the compilation of comments and the Summary of Engagement efforts, and then we went through each general plan topic to synthesize further key themes that we heard, we then went to the next step of drafting guiding principles, which are elevated a little bit even higher to talk about the kind of key themes and guideposts for the general plan update development. And I'm not going to go through each one, but they touched on quite a few. There's 11 of them: public spaces, land use and context, public safety and recreation, tourism, arts and culture, innovation, natural resources and conservation, and civic engagement, economic vitality, mobility, and connectivity. So we can go through those in more detail too, if you'd like. And lastly, after we went through that process of distilling some of these guiding principles, we went through a process of developing a draft vision statement for consideration. And it reads, "Dana Point is a unique coastal community with a small-town feel. This family-oriented, close-knit community celebrates and builds upon its heritage and connection to the ocean while striving to adapt, innovate, and continue to evolve in a sustainable way for current and future generations." And in all of this, we welcome further comments and refinement. And also during Phase Two, there's also a part of that process will be to further confirm vision, guiding principles, and shared values during Phase Two. So next steps, as Belinda mentioned, the City Council Study Session is next week on July 18. At that same meeting, there'll be a request for proposals for the project team to conduct the plan development phase of general plan update. We'll also be preparing a vision for Dana Point video, similar to the kickoff video of what is a general plan. This will help document what the visioning process included and what were some of the key themes that came out of that. And then, of course, a Phase Two Plan Development will take place over the next couple of years. So welcome any comments and questions? Any thoughts you want to share that should go as companion pieces with this package?
Yes, certainly. I think this was a very good presentation. At the outset, I'd like to tell you, and I'll basically ask the commissioners to give your feedback. And I'll give my feedback last, as you.
Great. Sounds great.
Yeah, I don't really have feedback, Greg. I think your team and staff and Belinda's, you know, just really great job. There's a lot of good stuff here. And, but there's a few things here I want, I think I want to communicate, but I want to make sure that I hear from the public do before I comment. Nothing dramatic, but you know, I want to take in any of the other comments. I was able to attend the last meeting last week and got to talk to some residents and love to, you know, hear some more comments from the community before I put my two cents in.
Mr. Ropel, if you have anything.
Yeah, also, thank you Diane and Elizabeth for the presentation and the efforts. And to staff, I got to attend a meeting as well, and it was very impressive. And I did get a chance to go through the documents. I mean, I didn't read every comment in the 200-plus-page document. But yeah, it's an impressive effort that you all have undertaken. And I think it's a good base for us to keep moving forward on this important and legally required effort. Thanks.
I'll just add a thanks as well. And I attended that event on the 29th, and I thought it was a good synthesis of what's being presented here and what you've gained over the past month. So thank you. And I know it's going to, we have a long way to go, but thank you for your efforts so far.
Great.
Thanks. I guess at this time, we'll open the public hearing.
Sounds good.
No speaker cards? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing. Any further comments, commissioners?
I've got a few, and I, you know, I think my thinking on tonight is that we just... You know, I don't think redlining or going down in the weeds is important, but there's a couple of key things I want to include in suggestions to the council, if I can get my fellow commissioners in agreement. So I actually was doing some thinking yesterday when I was reading through some of this. And I think some of my comments, you know, will relate to this story that are not story, but the situation with our town center plan. And if you read the opening introduction, it talks about creating a village. I mean, it's very specific. And then you look at the standards, and they do the very opposite. And they create these big, you know, what effectively is a two-story first floor, which is not a village in my mind. And so words to me are really important, especially when they're the piece of a puzzle that, you know, when we get to the next phase, some of us may not be here. Maybe new people here, or all we're going to have are words to look at. And so, and I will be a stickler for what the words... I mean, in my perspective, is those words are helpful for us. We should understand them and use them as we start to craft. The really, I mean, the real work's going to be, again, this next piece when we start getting into the weeds, right? So, or at least that's my perspective. So a couple of comments or thoughts for, that I think would be good for the council to consider. So I was reading the vision statement, and again, I don't want to get too picky here, but I'm going to be a little picky on a few of the words in here. I'd love to see us consider other words than unique. Unique, I mean, to me, it's, it doesn't, it's not good or bad. It is just different, and that just means different to me. But I, you know, when I experience the city, when I talk about the city with my friends, what I get, what I receive from them and what I experience within the city is much more than unique. It's, you know, energetic, it's dynamic, vibrant is certainly a word that comes to mind. So I'd like to have that a consideration. You know, the second one is the small-town feel. And I think, well, here's my perspective. I think we, as a city, have somewhat of an identity crisis. And you can see it in some of our hotels. I think the Ritz is probably the most clarion one, where they reference Laguna Niguel. So they don't even own that they're part of the city, which to me is insane. But I think for, you know, some of our world-class resorts, the idea of being in a small town, that's not what they think they're in. World-class resorts don't end up in small towns. Not that this is not a small town, but what does that actually mean, right? Is it the size of our city that's a town? Is it what happens within the boundaries? Is it, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to measure that, and it feels restrictive to me. And it feels like Dana Point was when it was the county, and it was just a neighborhood. So I'd like to consider that. And then the family-oriented, you know, I don't at all discount that we're not family-oriented, but we're so much more than that, we're diverse. And that, again, it seems very limiting because if all of who we are is to be focused on just families, you know, not everybody's got a family. And, you know, certainly, when I was, you know, early, my early twenties, I was looking for a vibrant place to live and something completely different than a family-oriented community. So I think those are my, most of my comments. And the last one is just something that had a little bit of a cringe on when I read it. And I don't mean this to be nitpicky or demean the work that you guys done. I think it's really hard to, well, you guys did a great job, and these are my only comments. So, and it was a lot of papers. But the word under tourism, that we're going to leverage tourism. And, you know, leverage to me seems like a really good word to use with money and investments. Like when you're trying to create value, that you leverage things. I see, I see, you know, tourism is a benefit to us. And the things that we can use tourism to benefit our community, I'd rather not leverage it. I want to benefit from it. Because if we're not benefiting from it, then we can, then we can scale it back, right? If it's not the right type of tourism. But if it's just leveraging the tourism to support our economy, I think... You know, I'm always worried about words being used, you know, against us. And so I think I'd like to see some consideration about that specific word. My words are not the most important. It's that you could, we consider maybe different words. And I'm just putting some suggestions out there to guide. words, and I'm just putting some suggestions out there to to guide, you know, the council or, and again, my fellow commissioners agree with moving that forward to the city council. Those are the rest of my comments, and I'm super impressed with what you guys have put together here, so thank you.
Commissioner Roper? Commissioner Boy? Actually, I, I'm really impressed with the presentation, but one of the things that comes to mind is, maybe it was a telepathy that was going between Commissioner Nelson and me, because on this here, I was thinking, I had the same feeling on the word unique, and my suggestion there would have been is, is a, an established coastal community as an example. And when I, I mean, I've seen in the presentation three or four places, small-town feel, small-town feel, small is a very relative thing. Yes, we are smaller than Irvine, okay? But I can give you examples, we are bigger than many others. And Irvine is certainly smaller than New York City or City of Los Angeles, you know, to stay local. And I've had the privilege to work as a consultant in a place which is city, state, and country, that is Singapore, okay? So the definitions and the idea of communication is that in a single word, you can let a layperson that doesn't know much about the planning process, you can communicate what you're trying to convey. So I think that idea needs to be clear, and as an example, on this one where it says small-town feel, I mean, you can easily replace the word small with vibrant, and that's exactly where I was going, couple of places where I felt there must have been a telepathy going on here between. And I think overall, I feel if we really pick the words, and I, I go back to the same example that Winston Churchill gave one time, somebody told him that, you know, we want you to come for a, for a meeting for 15 minutes, and it's in two weeks. He says, no, if it's 15 minutes, I need six months. If it's two hours, yes, I can come next week, you know? So, so the idea here is to, I feel this draft vision statement is a good place to start, but it still requires a lot of work, and it needs to bring in some of the, we talk about future generations, future generation is all about technology, AI, and all of that. How are we incorporating that in our planning process? I was glad to see the e-bikes and all of that stuff in here, and relative to circulation, that is. And so from that standpoint, I guess at this point, I'll basically conclude by saying that it requires more work, and I'm glad you're working on it. The, it's an excellent foundation that you have prepared based on the 8,000-plus comments. I'm glad to see there was a lot of community involvement, a lot of people were heard. So from that standpoint, it's all good. So with that, do we need a motion on this?
So to clarify the next steps, we have documented the comments we heard today, and staff, I think, will be presenting your comments and possibly some ideas and modifying the vision statement as discussed tonight. I want to say too, I really appreciate the level of discussion and the time you're taking to focus on the vision statement, it's a very important component of our, of our next steps. That being said, it will be, as was mentioned, looked at continuously and reaffirmed before we get too far into the the Phase Two. So we will, with your direction, it'll be taking us to the city council on July 18th to allow us to proceed to the next phase, which is release of the request for proposals so we can bring on a consultant to do the tough work. So if you're in agreement with what I'm saying, then I think we have some clear direction. Belinda's nodding too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.